Good evening. I'd like to call the October 20th Board Meeting of the Johnston County Commissioners to order. Welcome you who are with us here in person this evening. Thank you for coming. Also want to recognize the ones who are listening or watching on live stream. Welcome to you as well. Commissioner Stevens, who is not here in person but here virtually, will be participating in the meeting. So if everyone would remind me to wait about three seconds so she can vote on things, I would appreciate that. Also wanted to remind everyone of our six board priorities that we consider on each of our items. They are educational funding, infrastructure, financial stewardship, land use, public safety, and our county employees. So with that, we will proceed with the invocation, which I've asked Vice Chairman Harris to lead us in, and I've asked Commissioner Rose to lead us in the pledge. So if you choose to do so, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge.
Let us pray together. Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening in humble prayer. Father, we thank you for the goodness that you bring to our lives. Lord, we're thankful for the opportunity to gather here today to conduct the business for the people in this county. Father, every decision that's made here tonight, Lord, we ask that you bless us with understanding and compassion and wisdom and the ability to do what's right. Father, we just thank you for the men and women that serve in our military that are standing their post all around the world. And, Lord, we thank you for the veterans that have served and the sacrifices they've made for our freedom. Lord, we ask that you bless everything that we do and say, Lord, in Jesus' precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge to allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, be seated.
Seems like we're on top of meetings, huh?
All right, the first item we have to consider is approval of tonight's agenda. Is there any need to adjust the agenda or not? Your motion to approve as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Aye, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Agenda is approved. Next, we have five items on the consent agenda. They are approval of our September 15th Board Meeting, also some additions to the DOT system, planning and zoning approval of resolution for case 2506. And at that case, we didn't have the resolution finalized, so this is just formally approving our decision from that meeting. We also have some appointments to the Bentonville, or an appointment to the Bentonville Firefighters Relief Fund Board and budget revision for the Sheriff's Department. Is there any item that the Board wishes to remove from consent for further discussion?
Since you clarified that item about the planning and zoning, I move for approval.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right, next we have public comments. This is the opportunity for any member of the public to come forward and speak to the Board on an item on the agenda. And before I go too much further than that, is there anyone wishing to speak tonight? Madam Clerk, any emails? All right, then we will move on to the next item, which is proclamation for Alzheimer's Disease Awareness and Caregivers' Month. And Craig Olive is here to present this to us, and I've asked Commissioner Godwin to read the proclamation at the appropriate time.
Thank you, Commissioner Lawler, and fellow commissioners, and the public that's listening in and watching in. I come to you all every year at this time to ask if y'all will pass this proclamation on Alzheimer's awareness. All of us have been affected somehow and some way had loved ones that had Alzheimer's or dementia. And I am always an advocate for it. I helped started the first Alzheimer's Walk here in Johnston County several years back, and some of my family members have been affected with Alzheimer's. And it's very dear to me. I lost a sister back in January from it, and I got a current sister that has it down in Potable. So it's very dear to my heart, and I appreciate y'all taking the opportunity to pass this.
All right. Craig, I know you've been active in leading this for a number of years. I appreciate what you do, and I know that it has indeed impacted everyone in some way, shape, or form. There's been someone close to us who's suffered through it, so thank you for your efforts on that.
Thank you.
To say that my mom suffered through this is a misnomer because all of us did. That's the nature of this terrible disease. Let me read this proclamation. Whereas Alzheimer's disease is a progressive degenerative disease of the brain causing deterioration in memory and thinking as well as judgment and reasoning ability, it also affects behavior, emotions, and the ability to perform self-care. And whereas Alzheimer's disease is the seventh leading cause of death in North Carolina and also here in Johnston County, and whereas one in three senior citizens dies with Alzheimer's or another dementia, and more than half of all Americans know someone who has or had Alzheimer's, and whereas more than 6 million Americans are now living with Alzheimer's disease with over 210,000 residing in North Carolina, and whereas Alzheimer's disease affects whole families since it is a long-term illness that requires long-term care, and whereas nearly 12 million family members and friends are serving as their unpaid caregivers nationwide, 381,000 of those giving care are North Carolinians, and whereas the cost for caring for those with Alzheimer's and other dementias is estimated to total $360 billion in 2025. By 2050, these costs could rise to nearly $1 trillion. And whereas with early detection and diagnosis, individuals and families can gain access to treatment medications, enroll in critical research trials, and fully participate in planning for the future, and whereas the Johnston County Board of Commissioners recognizes individuals, families, friends, and caregivers dealing with the devastating effects of Alzheimer's disease, the researchers who are seeking a cause or causes and cure, and the educational programs and support services provided by Alzheimer's organizations. Now therefore, the Johnston County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim November 2025 as Alzheimer's Disease Awareness and Caregivers' Month in Johnston County and urges our citizens to commend its observance. Proclaim this 20th day of October 2025. I move that this be adopted, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion, comments?
Appreciate all the family members and friends who are also caregivers, and like I said, it affects everybody.
On behalf of the families and the patients and the caregivers, thank you so much for considering this.
All right. All right, hearing no other comments or discussions. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is from our Public Utilities Department. We have Kim Ranier here to present this to us. It is on USGS monitoring station agreement. So, Ms. Ranier.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen on the Board. I appreciate you taking the time to listen to this. We would like you to consider entering into agreement with the United States Geological Survey to install a monitoring station on the Neuse River at the Richardson Bridge Crossing. It's a five-year agreement with installment payments at up to $108,000. The agreement will cover the installation, maintenance, and operation of the monitoring station by the service. Do you all have any questions about the agreement?
Any questions?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. I posed this the other day, and I don't know if you're prepared to answer this or not, Kim, but do you know the difference in the flow here versus down there at that site?
There are two other monitoring stations in the area. There's one in Clayton where it crosses the bridge, and then there's one in Goldsboro. The reason we want one in the middle is because it's really close to our proposed lower Neuse water intake. They use this information to model the river flows for wastewater discharge and water intake. So it'll help them inform their model. We can't use just the Clayton data because after that, Swift Creek, Middle Creek, and Black Creek, all major water systems, enter into the river system and change the dynamics of the river. And then we can't just use Goldsboro because Middle Creek, Moccasin Creek, Little River, all that come in before that gauge. And this area is sort of unique in that it's a huge wetland area. So we're not sure how, and the model's not actually able to predict how that buffers an intake in the area or drought situations in this area. So it's an area that USGS has been wanting to study for a long time and didn't have the funding for. The Division of Water Resources has asked for this kind of information from us as we work towards a lower Neuse water supply intake in the area. So because of the uniqueness of the area and how they don't have a great way to model all those other river systems joining right there.
Can you estimate when we would have meaningful data from this?
It wouldn't take too long. They cannot get started until the federal government's back in action. But as soon as this agreement's signed and the government's back in action, they'll get started with ordering the equipment and installing it, and we'll get data, you know, as soon as it's installed. And it'll be real-time, hourly data, and they can increase that during flood events. Because as you know, Richardson Bridge is one of the first ones that closes in our area during flood events, and we'll be able to see the water level rising there, and we can request that we get information in a more frequent time during critical events.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Ranier?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
After the five years and the $108,000, who pays the cost of the station after that?
So like I said, this includes the installation, the maintenance, and the monitoring, you know, and real-time data being posted on what sites. So we would have an opportunity to renegotiate and extend the agreement after five years. Ideally, it would become so valuable that others would want to participate, or maybe federal funding would be available. But for now, on the five-year budget, there is no federal funding for this gauge.
But it is funded from our enterprise fund?
It would be through our enterprise fund, and like I said, others outside of our fund will benefit from it for the emergency services aspect.
Well, obviously, there's benefit to having this data to us.
Absolutely.
And the capital cost, I presume, is part of this $108,000?
Yes, sir.
The operational costs, is there anything that quantifies what that likely to look at on an annualized basis?
We were not given that information. We were just given this first initial five-year plan. I cannot predict that. I doubt it would go up because it doesn't include the installation moving forward, but there's inflation involved in all of that as well.
But we likely are looking at a reasonably long-term commitment in terms of cost here unless we have others that see that data as valuable to them.
Correct. And at some point, this would be rolled into the operational cost if we do develop a water plant down there, because we will be tying how much we take out of the river versus how much we take out of the quarries by the information we'll get at this gauge. So we would be able to better protect the environment by doing so. So if the river levels are low, we would take from the quarry more. And so it would be an incredibly important management tool for us at that stage as well.
Yes.
So I think it would be well worth these kind of investment costs over time. We're talking around $20,000 to $22,000 a year in this first agreement, and we would have to see what that looks like going forward.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
All right, any other questions?
Chairman, I have just a statement. I think that the value that it brings to public safety and emergency services, I remember in another lifetime, we spent a lot of time monitoring river levels during flood events, even in that, and just running rescue on the river. You know, the Sheriff's Department and the other departments around the county that run rescue on this river, that's really important data to have. So I think it's a very good move and very low cost considering what the amount and type of data you're going to receive from it.
There's a motion. Yes, sir.
I move that we approve the USGS monitoring agreement as presented.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have Johnston County Veterans Service Office with a grant request, and Robert Boyett is here to present that to us. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you, Commissioners. If I could interject, maybe a public comment, I suppose. I have in front of you the Veterans Day flyer. It's coming up pretty quick, and I know a lot of the towns throughout the county have their own Veterans Day events, and I'm glad that they do, and encourage all the citizens of Johnston County to attend those events. But this one specifically, I wanted to mention, the Johnston County Board of Education has kind of sponsored this event at Schuylkill High School for, I'm thinking, the last 17, 18 years in a row, just to encourage citizens wherever they go to go out and celebrate veterans throughout the county. And think of this one. This year, our very own Colonel Rudy Baker, a Vietnam veteran, is going to be a speaker, as well as Colonel Cheryl Stevens, a World War II veteran. They both are going to speak at this event. Not to mention the things that the students do, the ROTC events for all the high schools across the county. They'll be playing their part in that and providing a lunch for veterans after the ceremony. So I wanted to mention that. And I thank you for letting me do that.
Colonel, who put this together this year? Did we do this or the school system?
The school did that, sir.
They do a good job. Very sketchy.
And they'll have a pen, too, that they give out to all the veterans that attend. Any other questions about Veterans Day? So the Veterans Office would like to request approval to apply for a grant from the state in the amount of $20,000. The General Assembly approved $1.5 million to support county veteran services in each county that has less than eight veteran service officers. The grant is non-recurring, and the funds will have to be expended no later than June 30th, 2026. The deadline to apply for this grant is October 24th, which is this Friday. I'm required to complete a scope of work and a budget for the grant to ensure funds are spent. Within Dakota Federal Regulations, Chapter 2, Part 200, each of you should have a copy of the scope of work and the spending plan for your review. I expect a few modifications as new ideas are presented. For the proposal for the current ideas may not be approved by the state. Current items in the scope of work include assistance for veterans by reducing barriers to benefits, increasing self-sufficiency, and improving the quality of life. Examples include direct support for emergency housing needs such as delinquent utilities, transportation for veterans to VA medical appointments, accessibility aids such as ramps, technology support to assist veterans with virtual VA medical appointments, staff training for service officers, marketing material, legal support for estate planning, and outreach community events. The staff requests approval to move forward with the grant application process, and I'm happy to respond to any questions you may have.
All right, any questions?
I say go for it. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the staff applying for the veterans' grant.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, next up, we have Adrian O'Neill here from our Parks and Open Space Department with request for approval of contract amendment, Phase 1, Johnston County Regional Park.
Thank you for having me tonight. I just wanted to come type some loose ends and also give you a little bit of an update. Since we met last time on the regional park, we talked about the Baugh, Bady, and McAdams, and depending on whether the amendment is approved tonight, we have an official start date on the project of November 3rd. We're looking at a public groundbreaking between Thanksgiving and Christmas, most likely December 5th or the 12th, and the anticipated completion date of the project will be September 2026. So a little bit ahead of schedule, hopefully, but that depends on weather, as everything does. And what we're asking for tonight is the amendment to the design build contract, which that's what will be coming in. So that's what we have. Any questions?
All right, any questions? All right, I hear a motion.
Chairman, I move to approve the contract amendment.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
This just sort of solidifies the discussions we had last meeting about these things, yeah.
That's correct. And if I'm not mistaken, this 8:50 will come from Open Space Funds.
I'm excited. It's ahead of schedule.
It's easy to be ahead of schedule before you start.
Let's hope the amendment continues.
All right, any other questions, comments? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Oops. April, sorry.
I said aye.
Okay, all right. Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Thank you all for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have an update on the, or an exercise option to purchase for Johnson Estate Road in Clayton, and our attorney, Ms. Lester, is going to present that to us.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioners, for letting me speak to you tonight about the Johnson Estate Road property. We talked about this on September 15th, and you approved an option to purchase agreement on that date for us to consider the purchase of approximately 51 and 1/2 acres off of Johnson Estate Road. The purpose of this acquisition was for land banking for the community college and other purposes that are governmental that we might see that we need in the future. And as soon as you approved that transaction, we got to work on due diligence. I have with me tonight Jason Winsel, who's our real estate attorney, who's assisting with this transaction, and also Josh Bennett with Mosley Architects, who has really done a superb job of running this due diligence on this project. We've got a couple of updates for you, and of course, they're here to answer any technical questions that you might have about where we are. But the wetlands delineation, the phase one, and the surveying have all been completed, and everything was good with that. The surveying is done, and we're working on the access pieces related to that. And so we've had some communications with the town of Clayton and have been assured that any development on the adjacent properties over by Spring Brook would be required to stub to our property, and there are some plat maps with proposed dedications and those sorts of things. We've also had some contact with the adjacent property owners' attorneys about their future plans for that project, and we feel optimistic about that. Josh has laid out a proposed connection from Johnson Estate Road to the property, and we're working with the property owner on that. As you may recall, that is one of the conditions that we talked about escrowing money for. We don't have all of that worked out before closing, but we hope to have that worked out and then simultaneous closes on some property. But you have to exercise this option by, we have to do it tonight because it expires tomorrow if you choose to do so. And then we are prepared to move forward with closing by the end of the month, which is what the contract requires. If for some reason, if the geotech comes back or an issue arises with regards to the access easement, our remedy is not to close. And so you would be at risk, the $5,000 that you spent on the option. But otherwise, if things don't continue to go as we planned, then we do have the opportunity not to move forward with the closing. So far, because of the excellent work of Josh Bennett and Jason Winsel, we have as much information as possible to be able to make the decisions that you need to make for the exercise of this option. And I'll defer to Mr. Winsel or to Mr. Bennett if I've left something out. And they would be happy to answer any technical questions that you might have, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that I can answer that you might have about this project.
All right, any questions of one of the three J's?
I didn't even think about that.
I don't have a question, but I was just going to say thank y'all so much. I know this has been really quick and very timely, so I just appreciate all the hard work. I know there was a lot behind the scenes that went on in the past month, so I just really appreciate all your time and help with the project.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve exercising the option to purchase agreement.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next is manager report and comments. No report? All right, I'll turn over to bring to the Board for their reports and comments, and giving Commissioner Godwin the warning that he was going to be first, so.
Just making it happen. I've got a couple of things, Mr. Chairman. Yesterday, the St. James Church of Christ in the Dixie community, up near Nash County, north of Stansels Chapel, my neck of the woods, had a people-to-people ceremony they've been having for 45 years. They invite law enforcement, first responders, elected officials, veterans. It's just a great time to pull the community together, and they've been doing it again for over four decades. And I commend them, Reverend Holder and his group. That's how you build strong communities. So I would urge other places of faith or other organizations to think about similar type activity. And the only other thing I mentioned is, there's a green light burning on my front porch, and I just urge everybody to show support for the veterans with a green light between now and Veterans Day.
Got one at my house, too.
And get the bullback and loaves.
All right, Commissioner Stovall?
Mr. Chairman, I have nothing to add tonight.
All right. Commissioner Davis?
Last Monday was the legislative breakfast with the Board of Education and myself, Commissioner Rose, Mr. Harris, and Commissioner Godwin were all able to attend, and it was just really great to be able to have great conversations and dialogues with the Board of Education, but then also other elected officials in the community and then on the state level. So it was just really great to have those conversations and time together because it's not often that we're all together in one room. So it was really great to be able to partake in that.
All right. Commissioner Stevens, you have anything?
No, sir. I wish I was there with y'all.
All right, Commissioner Rose?
So last Monday, after the legislative breakfast, Monday afternoon, I was able to attend the Unified Basketball Game at Smithville-Selma, and it was between Triple S and North Johnson. And if you're not familiar with what Unified is, it is Special Olympics, and so they take kids of different abilities and put them together, and they play basketball. And it was amazing. And I want to congratulate Smithville-Selma High School because they were the first one in the county to receive the National Unified Champion School. So that was the big event. And Ken Smith from Channel 5 was there, and Debbie Anthony Alley from ESPN, and both schools packed it out. It was after school, and North Johnson sent buses full of kids, and Triple S brought a lot of kids. And quite frankly, it was the most cheering and loudest basketball, high school basketball game I've been to in a long time, and it was really exciting. And so it was great to be able to do that.
Thank you. My Chairman Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, one additional thing to add, that I was able to attend the advanced manufacturing train- Training Facility event this morning for Johnston Community College as they introduced the fiber optic network training program, which is really exciting to have a program here in the county that can train our young people to work in fiber optics and do the things that they're doing. Really inspiring. If you haven't had an opportunity to see the Advanced Manufacturing Training Facility, it is quite an area to behold with the welding program. There's just a lot of good programs down there that students are really taking advantage of. Place is very busy, and our economic development coordinator, Chris Johnson, did a great job on the program this morning as well. So thank you.
All right, thank you. I have two things. This is the County Employee Appreciation Week, which gives me an opportunity to thank them for being empowering, compassionate, responsive, and visionary, which they all are. Thank you for that. And again, appreciate the job that they do for us each and every day in their interactions with our citizens of Johnston County and our businesses. So just wanted to give the public an opportunity, if you see a county employee, to thank them for the work that they do for the county. The second is more personal. You know, I have eight grandsons, and I had another birthday this past Friday. Lane, he was four years old. He is grandson number six. So happy, a little bit late birthday, Lane. So with that, we'll move on. We do have a need for a closed session.
Does that mean I can wish my wife a happy birthday?
You better.
I'm here instead of there.
Absolutely. You can do what, yeah, you better sing or something else, and by all means, get that one.
We can all wish Mr. Godwin's wife a happy birthday.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, we have a need to go into closed session, so I move the board to go into closed session for the purposes of discussing matters relating to the location or expansion of industry or other businesses in the area pursuant to North Carolina General Statute
Second. I have a motion and a second, and there will be no action taken after our closed session for those who were maybe with the press that wanted to know that. With that, I will now ask for the vote on all in favor of going into closed session for the reasons stated, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? We will go into closed session just with a minute to clear the boardroom.